Buenas tardes. Estamos muy contentos de invitar al público a una conversación increíblemente importante sobre "Más allá de la reforma, la policía", "Reimaginar la seguridad pública y la policía" que está siendo sponsorizada por el Instituto del Black World 21st Century, la Policia y la Task Force de Accountabilidad. Yo soy Dr. Ron Daniels. Soy presidente del Instituto del Black World 21st Century. Y ustedes están participando en una conversación redonda sobre un tema muy importante que afecta a las vidas de los personas negras en todo este país, y de hecho, en todo el mundo. Así que queremos invitarlos a escuchar y escuchar a algunos de los expertos más poderosos y pensadores y activistas y académicos que se encargan de este tema. Para empezar, queremos asegurarnos de que todos sean presentados para que puedan saber quiénes son. Así que vamos a empezar justo aquí. Y vamos a tener que levantar la cabeza y decir quién eres y tu nombre, organización y ciudad.
Hola, soy Terry Watson, vengo de Pennsylvania. Soy el fundador de Strategies for Justice y uno de los fundadores de la National Strategies for Blacks in Policing. Seguidores.
Hola, soy Kareem Aziz, miembro de la Junta de la IBW 21st Century. Soy baltamericano y muy feliz de estar aquí y de bienvenerte a todos.
Saludos y bienvenidos. Soy Makichi Taifa, presidente de Washington DC, grupo Taifa y convencida de la Red de Justicia.
Mi nombre es Ginger Underwood, vengo de Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. Soy miembro de la Junta de la IBW y miembro de la Justice Collaborative de Pittsburgh.
Buenas tardes, soy Brian Williams. Soy profesor en la Universidad de Virginia en la Escuela de Leadership y Política Pública de Baton Rouge, Virginia.
Paz y bendiciones. Soy Tyrone Parker, directivo ejecutivo de la Alianza de Concierdos Men de Washington DC. Gracias.
Hola, soy Hazel Willis y vengo del gran estado de Texas y de la enorme ciudad de Houston. Gracias por permitirme estar con ustedes esta noche. Y soy miembro de la National Association of Blacks and Criminal Justice.
Buenas tardes, soy Terry McGee. Soy el presidente actual de la National Association of Blacks and Criminal Justice y vengo del gran estado de Texas, Houston, la ciudad de Houston. Gracias.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Sherman Lee Junior y soy el presidente nacional de la National Association of Blacks and Criminal Justice vengo de Roanoke, Virginia. Quiero estar aquí y espero esta conversación.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Siobhan Cyrus Williams. Soy la representante caribana de la National Association of Blacks and Criminal Justice de Trinidad y Tobago, Servicio de Prisión. Es un placer estar aquí, gracias.
Saludos, mi nombre es Dr. Taiwan Nuples. Soy co-convencida con la Justice Collaborative de D.C. y también miembro de la Junta del Instituto del Black World 21st Century.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Neil Franklin. Soy veterano policial de 34 años del estado de Maryland, actualmente viviendo en Fort Myers, Florida, y el presidente actual de la Parte de Acción de Policía.
Buenas tardes, soy Amina Saunders. Estoy con la Justice Collaborative de Filadelfia y también miembro de la Junta de la IBW de Philadelphia, Pennsylvania.
Buenas tardes, soy Dion Johnson de la National Police Association en el Reino Unido. Trabajo en la Policía de Staffordshire como miembro de la Igualdad, Diversidad e Inclusión.
Permítame hacer esto, por favor, no hacer eso. Ron Hampton, soy retirado de la policía de D.C. y ex director ejecutivo de la National Black Police Association, miembro del Instituto del Black World 21st Century.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Sean Patterson Howard. Soy el jefe de la gran ciudad de Mount Vernon, Nueva York.
Buenas tardes, bonjour. Mi nombre es Jacqueline Edwards. Trabajo para el Servicio Federal de Corregiones de Canadá y soy el actual presidente de la Asociación de Policías Negras. Y estoy muy feliz de estar aquí representando a todos. Gracias.
Mi nombre es Jenny Amerson y soy presidente de la Cámara de Presidentes de la National Association for Blacks and Criminal Justice y un empleado de 30 años del Departamento de Corregiones de Virginia.
Todos sabemos que dentro de la diáspora, el tema del crimen, el tema del castigo, el tema de la justicia criminal, la encarcelación en masa, estos temas plagan nuestra comunidad. Por tanto, mientras que conocemos, ya sea de Caribe, ya sea de África, ya sea de Europa o de Estados Unidos, hemos sufrido bajo la ocupación de la policía. Ha habido algo terrifyingo sobre nuestra existencia real, lo cual probablemente es ocasionado por el hecho de que hemos sido victimizados por la supremacía blanca y la enslavitud. Y creo que la gente tiene miedo de que de alguna manera somos personas peligrosas que están a punto de retaliar o hacer algo con ellos por lo que ha pasado a nosotros, lo cual realmente no es nuestra naturaleza. Sin embargo, hemos sido desafiados una y otra vez y continuamos teniendo estos temas ante nosotros hoy. Y no es solo Estados Unidos donde escuchas mucha información. También escuchas en el Reino Unido, también escuchas en el Caribe, también escuchas en Canadá. En donde sea que estemos como personas negras, estamos enfrentando y enfrentando estos temas. Así que convocamos a este cuerpo de brillantes personas para hablar sobre cómo reimaginamos la policía y la seguridad pública. La base fundamental es que realmente no creemos que necesitamos más policía. Ciertamente no creemos que necesitamos más ocupación por la policía. Y estamos enfrentando, nuevamente, cada vez más gente no solo siendo encarcelada, sino el litro de personas que simplemente están siendo asesinadas por la policía. En todas partes crea gran dolor y trauma en nuestra comunidad. Sin embargo, internamente también estamos enfrentando el tema de problemas de fractricidio interno, asesinatos internos, trauma interno que estamos experimentando. Así que hemos reunido para tratar con todos estos problemas. Ahora, hemos dicho "más allá de la reforma", y así me acerco a Ron Hampton, quien es uno de los expertos principales. Es muy modesto. Ron Hampton es uno de los expertos principales sobre cómo lidiar con el tema de la policía, no solo en este país, sino en el mundo. Y él es el coordinador de la Task Force de la IBW sobre la reforma de la policía y la responsabilidad, sobre la responsabilidad de la justicia y la responsabilidad. Y quiero empezar con él porque cuando hablo con él y él está en mi Junta, intento decir el término "reforma", pero antes de que pueda salir de mi boca, podría simplemente ser golpeado. Así que, Ron Hampton, ¿por qué no reforma? ¿Por qué es que ustedes son tan resistentes al idea de reforma?
Bueno, muchas gracias por la pregunta. Y una de las razones por las que estoy resistente al término "reforma" es porque la policía en nuestro país ha estado reformando desde hace aproximadamente cien años. Cien años atrás, la era profesional de la policía fue impulsada por los profesionales de la policía. Su profunda preocupación por cómo la policía en ese momento estaba estructurada, cómo traían a los oficiales de la policía en el departamento, el sistema de entrenamiento de los oficiales de la policía junto con el proceso de selección de los oficiales de la policía. Los oficiales de la policía, siempre he creído que la policía es una vocación. No es una profesión. Una profesión, en mi mente, sería algo como médicos, dentistas, abogados porque un título de doctorado es necesario junto con el entrenamiento adicional. Eso no es el caso en la policía. Ahora, hay oficiales de la policía con títulos, pero no es una cualificación para obtener el trabajo o requisito para obtener el trabajo. Aunque en los últimos diez o quince años hemos visto la aparición de títulos universitarios como requisito para la policía. Pero puedes ser un oficial de la policía básicamente y no tener un título de doctorado. Y no creo que eso sea porque aprendes en el trabajo. Es solo que no hemos avanzado en ese sentido. Así que si contamos, cuando la era profesional fue impulsada a la policía, hemos estado en el modo de reforma durante más de cien años. Y lo que hemos estado haciendo durante cien años, todavía lo estamos haciendo hoy. Aunque hay algunos ejemplos de la policía progresiva, hay algunos ejemplos de la policía de la comunidad. Pero cuando hablamos de reforma, pienso en ese contexto. Lo que soy un partidario de es la reestructura. Pero mis veintisiete años de ser un oficial de la policía junto con los veintisiete años en los que he estado trabajando en este área ahora me han llevado a creer que tal vez no necesitamos... Y cuando digo "no necesitamos", estoy hablando de la comunidad afroamericana y la comunidad hispana y los residentes de esas comunidades. Tal vez no necesitamos la policía, tal vez necesitamos algo muy diferente. Pero cuando empiezas a hablar de algo diferente, tienes que hablar de qué vas a sustituirlo porque no puedes tener la conversación con la gente que ha beneficiado de una manera u otra de esta institución en particular y luego decir que lo van a tomar. Así que, pero tenemos que tener esa conversación. Y eso es lo que esta reunión es, sobre tener esa conversación y hablar sobre si decidimos, Ron, si decidimos sustituirlo, ¿qué vamos a sustituirlo y cómo va a beneficiar a las personas que están destinadas a servir?
Bueno, gracias por eso. Desde ahora en adelante, asegurarme de usar el término "reestructura" para que no me castigue Ron Hampton. Ahora, muchos de nosotros creemos que en la última periodo, no solo en este país, sino en todo el mundo, hemos sido particularmente afectados por la guerra contra las drogas. De hecho, Michelle Alexander, en su libro de milestone sobre esta cuestión, en New Jim Crow, habla de esto. Así que Neil Franklin, me gustaría preguntarle, ¿en qué grado cree que la mayor mayoría de lo que estamos siendo afectados es debido a la guerra contra las drogas? Y tal vez dale algunos ejemplos de cómo la guerra contra las drogas se desplaza de maneras que incluso no podríamos pensar en términos de los tipos de arrestos y encarcelaciones que están ocurriendo.
Sí, Ron, gracias por eso. Y voy a empezar con algo que creo que es realmente importante, algo que no sabía cuando entré en la policía. Como hecho caso, he estado en la policía durante dos décadas antes de que me di cuenta, antes de que supiera la historia detrás de la guerra contra las drogas, antes de que supiera la historia de nuestra política de drogas en este país y más allá, y la motivación por ello, y la gente que estaba detrás de ello. Personas como Harry Anslinger, que muchos consideran el primer juez de drogas de nuestra nación, que después de estar involucrado en la prohibición de alcohol estaba buscando una nueva dinastía. Y decidió la guerra contra las drogas. Mucha gente no entiende la historia racial detrás de nuestra política de drogas. Por ejemplo, uno de los primeros objetivos de Harry Anslinger fue Billie Holiday. Bien, perseguir a Billie Holiday y la heroina. Sabes, ella cantó algunas canciones muy provocadoras pero muy real que usaba e infuriaba a él. Pero, de nuevo, avanzando con Harry Anslinger, perseguir a músicos jazz, que eran principalmente negros, perseguir a negros, perseguir a mexicanos en este país con marihuana, pero luego avanzando muy rápido en los años 1970s con Richard Nixon. Esto es lo que la mayoría de la gente está familiarizado con cuando hablamos de la guerra contra las drogas. Y eso es donde Richard Nixon, presidente Nixon, coinó la frase "la guerra contra las drogas". Sabes, y en ese momento, Richard Nixon estaba lidiando con la guerra de Vietnam y los hippies, como los llamábamos. Pero también estaba lidiando con el movimiento de los derechos civiles, ¿verdad? Es para los negros. Y, sabes, uno de sus asesores informó que lo que la guerra contra las drogas de Richard Nixon estaba todo sobre era una forma para que Richard Nixon infiltrara nuestras organizaciones negras, perseguir a nuestros líderes negros. Sabes, estábamos pasando por un momento en el que no podía perseguirnos por ser negros y escapar con él, por lo general. No obviamente, overtamente. Pero usando la guerra contra las drogas, podía hacer esto e infiltrar nuestras organizaciones y básicamente comenzar, ya sabes, a atacarnos como gente. Y, por supuesto, hizo lo mismo con los manifestantes de la guerra de Vietnam con marihuana. Pero desde ese periodo en adelante, a través de los años 1980s, cuando estábamos lidiando con la llamada era crack y problemas con eso, el enfoque nunca fue para lidiar con el uso de drogas en nuestra comunidad, en la comunidad negra, como lo que realmente era, era un problema de salud pública. Nuestra política de drogas se trataba de nosotros en la comunidad negra como criminales y nos etiquetaban como criminales. Desde Richard Nixon en adelante, mucho dinero, y esto es cada administración, ya sea conservadora o liberal, todas las administraciones estaban constantemente poniendo más y más dólares federales en los esfuerzos de la policía de la guerra contra las drogas, haciendo dinero, este dinero disponible para la policía local. Comenzó en el nivel federal, de nuevo, pasando por Harry Anslinger, como dije antes. Pero luego comenzaron a hacer dinero federal, haciendo... Yo diría, bribando a la policía local para involucrarse en la guerra contra las drogas. Y, por supuesto, esa batalla fue ejercida y ganada en nuestras comunidades, en las comunidades negras. Y luego, Ron, mencionaste la escritura de Michelle Alexander en New Jim Crow. Y, sabes, ella explica esto, esta casta de personas creadas poniendo tantos negros, principalmente al principio, hombres negros en prisión, jefes de hogares, ya sea en Baltimore, Chicago, Nueva York, Miami, no importa, todo este país. Simplemente comenzamos a llenar nuestras prisiones, ya sabes, de cuatrocientos mil, aproximadamente cuatrocientos mil personas en prisión a más de dos millones de personas en prisión. Y la mayoría de esas personas parecen nosotros sentados aquí. Sabes, e incluso cuando avanzamos hoy, en el momento de hoy, todavía estamos haciendo lo mismo. Sabes, todavía estamos luchando y ejerciendo esta guerra en nuestras comunidades negras. Y hemos estado haciendo eso tanto, ya sabes, no solo la policía está tan acostumbrada a ello y siguiendo estas prácticas, este modo, todavía atacando a la comunidad negra, todavía deteniendo a nuestros jóvenes hombres y mujeres negros, buscándolos en las esquinas de la calle, buscándolos en sus autos, buscando nuestras casas, no knock drogas raids. Todo esto está repetido una y otra vez. Así que no solo las policías están tan ingrainedas para hacer esto, sabes, pero muchos de nosotros hemos sido lavados para creer que este es el camino hacia adelante.
Gracias por eso, Neil, muchas gracias por eso. Sra. y tío Makichi Taifa, ustedes ustedes fueron tan instrumentales en señalar las diferencias entre cómo, o el castigo, desgraciadamente, entre lo que estaba pasando en la comunidad blanca y lo que estaba pasando en la comunidad negra y ilustrarlo porque incluso en nuestra comunidad teníamos que entender cuáles eran las diferencias porque no eran inmediatamente noticeable. Así que, ¿podría hablarnos de algunas de las cosas que ayudó junto con otros aliados de este movimiento para lidiar con, para erradicar las disparidades? Porque los hombres blancos estaban haciendo ciertas cosas y escapando de ello, y los negros estaban haciendo ciertas cosas y estaban en una prisión.
Así que muchas gracias, Dr. Ron Daniels. Y creo que podría empezar con estar ocho meses embarazada y caminar en los hallazgos del Congreso, luchando contra el ley de crimen omnibus, que terminó siendo la ley de crimen omnibus de 1994, que incluye la expansión mayor de la pena de muerte federal en tiempos modernos, la ley federal de tres destrozos, el trato de los 13 años de adultos, la desvistización de la regla exclusiva, más y más dinero para más y más estados para encarcelar más y más personas durante largos periodos de tiempo, y el fracaso de abordar la desparidad y la penalti entre el crack y el cocaine podrido. Y durante ese tiempo, había muchos negros que apoyaron la ley de crimen de 1994. Incluso nuestro presidente actual hoy fue uno de los principales arquitectos de eso. Pero había algunos de nosotros que decían: "No, hay muchas cosas pasando aquí. Hay consecuencias no intencionales pasando aquí". Esto terminó realmente siendo un enlazamiento de la era de la encarcelación en masa, que hoy estamos tratando muy duro para nosotras. Pero todo esto relacionado con el crack versus el cocaine podrido, de nuevo, como dijo Neil, muchos de nosotros incluso estuvimos lavados porque vimos toda la devastación que le estaba causando el crack en las comunidades. Quiero decir, no uso drogas, ni me dedico a marihuana, nada de esas líneas. Pero había algo sobre todo esto, sobre el crack. Era como decir, "crack y cocaine podrido, hice mi investigación. Era el mismo drug. La única diferencia fue un horno y una..." Me olvidé, ¿cuál es? Bacon sauce, o whatever, entre crack y cocaine. Ambos son peligrosos, ¿vale? Ambos son bad for the community. Pero la penalti para el crack y el cocaine en la sentencia fue un ciento por ciento, un ciento veces más que la de un cocaine podrido. Y pensé, bueno, está bien, más negros usan crack que hombres. En realidad, eso no era correcto. Descubrí en el Instituto Nacional de Abuso de Drogas que los más usados eran en realidad hombres. Pero fue donde fueron implementadas las fuerzas de la policía principalmente a las comunidades negras. Y así, como resultado, muchos de nosotros fueron arrestados y puestos en prisión y todo eso. Y así luchamos sobre eso. Esto fue durante un tiempo en el que tuvimos que llevar a la NAACP, créanos o no, corriendo y gritando, a trabajar en este tema. Esto fue en los años tempranos. Pero como las personas comenzaron a ver las disparidades y quién estaba encarcelado, realmente se convirtió en un caso realmente para todos. Aunque ahora todavía estamos tratando, Dr. Daniels, de hacer que la sentencia diferencial igualice a un ratio de 18 a 1 ahora. Y estamos tratando todavía después de décadas para llegar a uno a uno. Así que ese es solo un ejemplo de disparidades, tratamiento de hombres versus tratamiento de negros, donde la policía está implementada, y cómo realmente nosotros como gente, como raza, realmente necesitamos mirar más allá de la superficie y mirar en las consecuencias no intencionales de estas políticas que están siendo efectuadas.
De hecho, cuando decimos hermanos y hermanas de los hermanos y hermanas y decir la guerra contra las drogas es una guerra contra nosotros. Correcto, tenían esa noción. Ahora, debido a que hay muchas personas en esta mesa, han habido reformas significativas. Al menos han sido hechas esfuerzos, la regulación de la marihuana, la decriminalización de las drogas, todo tipo de cosas han hecho algo para comenzar a mitigarlo. Sin embargo, todavía enfrentamos grandes desafíos. Teníamos en nuestra mesa una presentación anterior hoy de Bethany...
Young.
Bethany Young y nuestra hermana...
Tree Sulten.
Tree Sulten.
Tree Sulten. Y ellos estaban en el Lab de Justicia de D.C. Y hablaron de varias cosas que están trabajando para tratar de traer cambios. Son abolicionistas, pero quieren tomar algunos pasos en el entramo para lo que llamamos reducir el patrón. Pero es interesante que muchas de las cosas que están trabajando son directamente atraseables y atributables al hecho de que todavía hay este remnants de la guerra contra las drogas. Por ejemplo, todo tipo de orden de búsqueda. Muchos de los... En nuestra mesa se discutió que muchos de estos órdenes de búsqueda están directamente relacionados con la búsqueda de drogas. Objetivos de no knock. En la mayoría de los casos, estos objetivos de no knock son sobre la búsqueda de drogas. Y todo el tema de la detención y freno. En algunas ciudades como Washington DC, el equipo de salidas de las fases, aquí es salidas de las fases, arrojando a la pared. Así que todas estas detenciones anteriores. Muchos de estos detenciones anteriores, algo que te coloca en la pared con tu incendio, no tu incendio, pero tu aire freshener, la gente te detiene en base a eso, pero realmente están buscando drogas. Así que esto sigue siendo un mayor problema. Así que aunque haya habido algunas reformas, así que se diga, todavía encontramos grandes números de nuestra gente desproporcionadamente aún siendo arrestados y llevando la marca de ese arresto porque en algunos casos todavía hoy eso significa que no puedes conseguir un trabajo o que tienes dificultades en esas líneas. Pero lo que esta mesa ha estado haciendo es también mirando algunos ejemplos como este collab de la Justicia de D.C. Hablan sobre limitar las órdenes de búsqueda, prohibir los objetivos de no knock, prohibir las búsquedas de jóvenes adultos. Prohibir... Así que están trabajando con los oficiales de la policía y con los tribunales para tratar de limitar estas cosas y tratar de averiguar cómo detener las interacciones con la policía. En algunos casos, alrededor de cosas menores que a veces terminan en mayores y a veces consecuencias mortales que estamos diciendo una y otra vez. Así que lo que quiero hacer ahora es centrarme en Jenny Amerson. Ella ha estado trabajando en estas áreas durante mucho tiempo. Y me pregunto si puede daros algunos ejemplos de algunos de los trabajos que están ocurriendo en Virginia, que también está tratando de mitigar algunas de esas cosas, tratando de erradicar algunas de esas cosas, tratando de hacerlas más sensibles y hacer sanidad de algunas de estas cosas insaneas. Así que, vamos a la mesa.
Bueno, en Virginia, están tomando, estamos tomando algunas medidas en cuanto a hacer algo sobre lo que está pasando con la policía y también en el Departamento de Corregiones de Virginia. Y estoy orgulloso de decir que tenemos el segundo menor porcentaje de recidivismo en Estados Unidos. Y estoy muy, muy orgulloso de eso debido a la dirección que nuestro director ha estado llevándonos y guiándonos y cambiando la cultura de cómo hacemos esto. Pero lo primero que noté fue que soy miembro de la Team de Intervención de Crisis. Y tenemos muchas personas que sufren con enfermedades mentales o lo que sea. No soy de Paris, Virginia. Y comenzaron, pasaron la legislación y comenzaron una cosa donde en lugar de la policía que no estuviera entrenada para manejar problemas de salud mental, que envían a alguien junto con ellos de la Team de Intervención de Crisis que era un profesor de salud mental calificado que es entrenado para trabajar con individuos que están en crisis y desesperados. Y así, eso es uno de los puntos que creo que fue muy proactivo, especialmente después de George Floyd y otros incidentes que han pasado en Virginia y en todo el país, enfermedades mentales y la policía respondiendo a esos llamados. Y ahora estamos entrenando a los oficiales de la policía sobre cómo lidiar con enfermedades mentales cuando reciben llamadas o lo que sea. Y luego enviando a un profesional calificado a trabajar con estas personas. Lo otro es, tuve la oportunidad hace años de ir a Tokio, Japón. Y la razón por la que fui a Tokio, Japón es porque en el Departamento de Corregiones de Virginia teníamos programas de descanso donde en seis meses los agentes de probation, los integrantes, podían salir seis meses temprano y ir a una instalación de transición y salir a trabajar y reintegrarse lentamente de vuelta a la comunidad. Y eso fue considerado lo que funciona porque tuvieron mucho éxito con ese programa. Y funcionaba tan bien que querían que fueran a Tokio, Japón. Así que querían adoptar lo que estábamos haciendo aquí en Virginia. Y cuando fui a Tokio, vi que tenían las comunidades involucradas en la policía. En cada comunidad en Tokio tenían subestaciones de policía y los miembros de la comunidad fueron encarcelados. Y esos miembros de la comunidad, ellos policían su propia comunidad. Y lo encontré muy, muy interesante porque en realidad funcionó. Sabían a la gente que estaba involucrada, que estaba en la probation, que estaba en paro. Esas personas fueron retiradas o encarceladas por el juez y el tribunal. Y tenían la autoridad de trabajar con estos individuos y asegurarse de que estaban haciendo lo que se suponía que debían hacer en la comunidad. Y así, son bastante cosas que en realidad funcionan. Pero nuestro director en el Departamento de Corregiones de Virginia cambió toda la cultura de la forma en que hacemos esto creando una organización de aprendizaje, donde tenemos equipos de aprendizaje. Todo el mundo está en un equipo de aprendizaje. Incorporamos diálogo en nuestra organización donde no es de arriba hacia abajo, donde te dicen qué hacer y tú estás trabajando con los integrantes o lo que sea, tú solo lo haces. Ahora tenemos un control en lo que está pasando al usar el diálogo. Tenemos una voz y estamos activando el cambio. Y también tenemos la iniciativa llamada ambiente de sanación donde es perfeccamente creado manteniendo a todo el mundo en cuenta de cómo nos tratamos unos a otros y tratando unos a otros con dignidad y respeto incluso hasta el cliente que nos enfrentamos, la gente con la que trabajamos. Y haciendo eso, he visto toda la cultura y es por eso que tenemos un tan bajo porcentaje de recidivismo. Tenemos una iniciativa de reintroducción. Tenemos a toda la comunidad. Tenemos el Consejo de Intrausos. We have reentry councils coming together, every organization in the community that has something to do with an offender. DMV, social services, employment, all of those entities come together and talk about how can we help this person when they re-enter the community. And the last thing I'm going to share is we have the offender resettlement journey. Where we bring people that have been incarcerated back. And we have everyone that's ever dealt with that person. Uh, police, starting with the police, all the way down to when they first entered into corrections. Case workers, probation officers, everyone. And they have an opportunity to tell their story about how they were treated when they were arrested, how they were treated when they were incarcerated and how they're being treated on the outside. And we trace that journey. And then we look at what's needed, what is needed to change. And doing those proactive things and giving them the programs that they need. And, and looking at the thinking behind their behavior, we've had great success.
Thank you so much. Tyrone Parker. Uh, who claims to be retired. Tyrone Parker is a formerly incarcerated person who has traveled the world talking about how to deal with this issue of reimagining public safety, policing and how to engage our communities and trying to transform them. So I'm wondering whether you would share with us your experience, the, the experience of the Alliance of Concerned Men. Some concrete examples of where you were faced with the question of crime and murders and, and yet the police wanting to come in and crack heads and try to stop that from happening. All this con- complex cauldron of issues. And you did it successfully. Who says that it can be done? That you, you, you've done it, your, your organization has done it. So I'm wondering whether you would just give us some of the elements, some of the ingredients? And then maybe just sketch out a little bit of what actually happened in terms of the work of the Alliance of, of Concerned Men.
Thank you, Ron. I greatly appreciate this opportunity to share in the midst of such great people. The richness that I've come to learn and to hear from here is just profound. It adds on another chapter of me being able to talk to the youth and to those individuals that are being confronted by virtue of the war on crime, the war on drugs. The implications of the war on drugs was still fielding, well, from the Nixon's administration. Where the impact of massive incarceration have hit us to the point where three and four generations are confined, which is actually resulting into the fact that family structure being destabilized. Children not knowing who their fathers are or the structure aspects of things. Having a profound deterioration in our, in our community. As recent as then as well as now. We can click on the television and see individuals being killed, pregnant women that are being shot. Uh, while just today, Karen Baltimore. So this is part of the, the war on crime and the implications in this field of factors that is occurring within our own communities this whole day. The work that we are doing is trying to basically capture, how do we do the healing perspective of it? How do we begin to resolve these particular issues in regards to family structure, community? And we're doing it the old-fashioned way by showing up in the sense of spirit, love, care, concern. But being there with the, with our youth, with our community to help to navigate them through these trying, trying times. These are not easy times. These are very challenging moments for each and every one of us that sit at this round table. For each and every one of us have got to know that we have felt some form of the balance that is occurring within our community. So I say all this, Ron, to say that the work that is being done by organizations like the Alliance of Concerned Men, Cure the Street, Creditive Messages, is so needed now than ever before. But that is part of the solution to be able to show compassion, concern and to help to navigate our kids out of this maze of violence that they're confronted with. And being there continuously. It's never a period in regards to the work that we are doing, it's always a calm. It's the compassion that's being demonstrated, that we're seeing results, we're seeing successes that come from it. I know in the District of Columbia where we worked with, uh, Beneturs at that point was considered one of the most dangerous places in the District of Columbia. And during that time, the District of Columbia was considered to be the merit capital of the USA. But we were able, to be able to go into that particular community, bridge the gap of understanding. Work with those young kids, men and women. And today, some twenty years later, when you look at them, you see transformation. You see individuals that are basically went on to get their degrees, went on to become married, went on to build a community. This is what we can do and this is what we will do. As we sit around this round table and look at solutions to be able to solve our own challenges that we're confronted with. The solution is in the problem. There's no question about it. But we must understand the wider loop and being open to returning citizens that are coming home with the desire to make a difference in their own community. This is what the Alliance of Concerned Men is composed to a large degree of returning citizens, men and women, that take commitment to all types of public safety, for lack of a better term, components in our city. We are considered as the walking wise men in the communities that we go into. We've been able to create programs that traditionally have not even been thought of, but they derive out of the need of us understanding what the needs are. We've been able to do police work in the contents of locating kids that had run away from group homes and shelter homes within this, our city. Having contracts with Child and Family Services. In eleven years, we were able to locate almost twenty-seven hundred kids that had ran away from group homes and shelter homes. Why? Because we knew our communities. They understood that we were there to help them and not to arrest them. Every part of the Alliance of Concerned Men has been to decrease the presence and the dependency of the police. That's been our overall objective. And we have been extraordinarily successful for that over the years. That's the spirit that we bring to the table for transformation with a population that is being looked down upon, not considered as having value, but it's that natural resource that are on these street corners that have been rejected, that have been thrown out of school, don't have a place, that we offer can rebuild transformation. That's my thoughts on that.
And this challenging proposition that is striking to some people when they hear about defund the police, abolish the police, all of these different notions, which are really in many respects rooted in some of the things that you've talked about and Tyrone has talked about in terms of the way in which our people have come to over-rely on the police for things that we used to just handle ourselves. And I know in the Highland and the community, you actually did some data, you, you actually began to do some research to look at those things and whatnot. Would you, would you share some of that information with us?
Yes, I'd be glad to. First, I'd like to add a name to the information that, that Jenny was talking about. The name of that policing style in Japan is called koban. K-O-B-A-N. And, uh, as a matter of fact, if I can say this, that, uh, when, when the community policing, when the community policing philosophy was first generated, to some extent, they looked at the koban model because of what they wanted to do in relationship to how crime and disorder was handled in Japan. And it was, that's an excellent model. But the foundation of the koban model is that the police live in the community. They come from the same community and they're stationed in that community. That, that was similar to the, the model in the UK when the, when, when, when the, when, uh, in the beginning of the eighteen twenty-nine, when they first started the met policing in the UK. As a matter of fact, police officers were given homes in the community so that they would stay in the community too after school was over. So the history is, was, as much as we talk about it in the US, that wasn't, that wasn't the adoption. There was no adoption of those particular styles, even though we have tendencies to talk about P.O. But P.O. wasn't really used in the US when we talk about the development of, of the philosophy of policing. But, but let me say this. One of the things that, that, that defund has, I think, caused us to do in a kind of strange kind of way, the language of defund has caused us to pay attention to policing in the kind of way that, a- again, that restructuring was something that had to be done. It, it caused us to evaluate policing style. It, it caused us to evaluate policing procedure. It caused us to look at policing from a philosophical standpoint in terms of, is it doing what it was designed to do in the way that it was designed to do it? And I said, I know that sounds like double talk, but for black folk and Hispanic, that wasn't the case. Let, let me, let me say this. One of the things that, uh, in, in this, in this particular environment where crime is getting more crime, stats have gone up. I don't want to say to y'all, because I know I don't look like I'm over seventy, but. I have not lived a summer in Washington DC that there wasn't an uptick in crime. Now, search your memories where you live. In some kind of way in our community, we have experienced in the summertime, and there's some scientific reasons why there's an uptick in crime in the summertime. So this, this was, this was special though. Because we had just come out of two years of solitude and confinement. Not being able to go out and do the kind of things that we normally do in our life. Lot of mental health issues because people had to stay in the house. So this uptick was different in that regard, but it wasn't any different in terms of the experience of the uptick in crime as a relation to summertime. We have seen this before. What wasn't, policing wasn't prepared for. They really were not prepared for it because they were expecting or addressing it in the way that, that, that they usually had by putting officers on the street, for example, walking foot people, riding bicycles, those kinds of things. When our people needed to be talked to. If we were going to do anything wrong, we needed to put the ser- money in the social services that existed in our government so they could go in the community and address the issues. Because our young people, our adults, our families needed to talk to someone. Yeah, they didn't need to see the police who wasn't going to talk to them. They needed to have people to talk to and talk about what that experience was like. So those were the kind of things. But defund to me and to the organization that I've had the honor and pleasure to work with was about the opportunity to look at what police do, examine the budgets and the process by which police do it. And the number one thing that we looked at was police call for services as it related to mental health. I happen to love, have, I got three children, my middle child is my son and he's a person on the spectrum. Thirty-seven years old, six-one and weigh a hundred and ninety pounds. And I can tell you, when he having an autistic episode, uh, you may not want to be standing around him. But that's his autism. But the fact of the matter is, he don't need the police. He need a mental health professional who's been trained and educated and understand how to deal with people with what? Autism. And see, that's what's missing in the police approach to doing this work. But defund made us look at those kind of things because as much as we really weren't going to defund the police, but it, but it gave us the opportunity to begin to evaluate and analyze police departments, which we really wanted to do in the first place, tell a lot of the reformers. I can't say restructors, but reformers, and they wanted to do that. And that was a responsible way. But defund, the defund movement, I believe, caused us to do a lot of things that we wouldn't normally done. But, and, and then also, a- a- as I close up, also that very scary, inhumane picture of that white police officer standing on Brother George Floyd's head with, with his foot on his neck. That was enough, just for people to say, we have to do something. That was enough. And so that's what we've been in the throes of, giving something to them.
Well, this is, as we've learned, wherever black people are, people have been sent, having faced enslavement, colonialism, neo-colonialism, we, we have similar problems. And so I would like to turn now to our, our friends, our comrades abroad to talk about, um, their experiences. Uh, particularly in terms of giving some examples, one or two of just how, how you're responding to similar kinds of crises. And first of all, I want to turn to Sister Deion, who is, and by the UK, we mean United Kingdom. So everybody who's soon you know with United, the UK is United, I mean, England. Across the pond, if you will. So Sister Deion, you have the floor.
Thank you. Uh, I, I think it's really important to start by saying anything that happens across the pond here has such an effect on our communities in the UK. It's tremendous. I can't, I can't say enough how much we feel the pain and hurt to, I, I, I can't, and, um, when you, when you talk about the, the murder of, of George, George Floyd and, um, then sort of the ripple of movement and the BLM movement in the UK was, was phenomenal.
Absolutely.
Absolutely phenomenal. Um, I've, I've never seen anything like it, uh, in my lifetime, absolutely. Um, and the, then the, the effect, the cause and the effect then of policing and how we police those, uh, our communities and, uh, and those, those communities that are affected. Um, it really, it really shone a light on that. And, um, as a, as a member of staff in a, in a police force in the UK, uh, working with my officer colleagues who were working those protests and those demonstrations, they felt, they felt the pain, uh, and were looking for support from their, their leaders in their organizations and their forces. And some chief officers were very forthcoming, we support you, we are with you. We, uh, we will take that symbol of taking, uh, the knee, we will hold minute silence. And then there were others, the lack of consistency, who categorically said, you will not, you must not, you should not. And I think that, um, that really sort of showcased the lack of consistency, the lack of understanding of, of communities in the UK. Um, so it is, it really is, uh, detrimental to, to how we, how we police. Um, examples of how we, we do respond, as I say, there are some, uh, some really great pieces of work in the UK of how we, um, engage with communities, how we have, um, roles such as police community support officers who don't have the, um, the abilities to arrest, they don't have that legislation, they don't have that warrant card, but they, they are in the communities every day that they are working. They are talking, they are listening to the residents in the communities. They're engaging, they're going to, uh, community meetings, places of worship, to schools, to colleges. They're engaging, they're going to, uh, community meetings, places of worship, to schools, to colleges. Um, and they're feeding that information back in to, uh, police officers, who then, will then sort of police the communities respectfully. It really can work very well, um, and there are other, uh, uh, other times when not, not all forces will necessarily utilize those roles effectively. In fact, some police forces, when it comes to, um, cost saving and cutting, they will, um, they will discard that role. So therefore then, there is none of that community engagement. We lose that function, we lose that connection with our, with our communities. But certainly, working, um, in the National Black Police Association, we encourage those roles. We encourage our neighborhood officers to engage with their communities. Um, we encourage them to feed into the national, um, and we, we congratulate and, uh, and we nominate those forces and those local, um, networks, um, for the good work that they're, that they're doing. So there is, there's lots of, lots of fantastic work that goes on, um, and it's, and I think again, it's important to say that, um, although gun crime is, is, is not, not anywhere near what it's like here. Um, knife crime is, is, is ridiculous in the UK, absolutely ridiculous. Um, and it, it probably is our biggest problem in our black communities. Um, and certainly in the larger cities, uh, Greater Manchester Police, Liverpool, uh, London, Birmingham, we really do have problems. So we do, uh, work with our local BPAs and work with our local communities to try and engage with those young males, to try and, um, reduce that, uh, uh, and try and get the message, the same sort of messages you're delivering in your communities, we're trying to deliver in ours. And I, so certainly coming here and listening to everybody here, um, has given me some fire in, more, more fire in my belly. More fire in my belly to do more, to, to, um, to reach out more to those communities, to see how we can certainly, um, Tyrone, the, the work that you're doing, we certainly can look at, at, at almost replicating that and just, just replacing that guns word for knives. Cause that is our biggest problem there.
And if I could build on, on, um, what my sister just talked about from the Canadian perspective, and specifically, um, Dr. Daniels, to your question, around the impact of the murder of George Floyd, um, and in Canada, Black Lives Matter, what that did in Canada is it amplified the voices of communities. It amplified the voices of communities. And what it does did, it, the, the trauma that had been subdued, if you will, the inability for us to really speak truth to power, as we often say, that voice came out. It was no longer suppressed because everybody was talking about it. And everybody felt empowered not to just talk, but to act. Because remember, after the murder of George Floyd, it wasn't about the murder anymore, it was about justice. So whether it was a basketball, whether it was sports, whether it was education, whether it was health, whether it was justice itself in terms of the, the, the policing corrections, immigration, the whole world came together and said enough is enough. But they also talked about what needed to be done differently, and there was a, a self-examination and a request that everybody looked in that mirror instead of looking next to them. We were encouraged, if you will, if not challenged, to look in the mirror and wonder whether we were contributing. And I might suggest how long we've been contributing. Cause it was no longer a question of if. I think there was a realization that no matter the profession, no matter the vocation, we've all witnessed injustice, we've all contributed to it. And in fact, some of us black folks, with all due respect, colleagues, friends, some of us black folks with all due respect, were perpetrating the very thing we were fighting in the, at the same time. Classism, colonialism. Because we then, in, almost in a protective way, as a community, would conform to the very thing that we knew was wrong. So, as my sister said, we don't have to wait until we wake up the next morning for the morning news. What happens in the United States of America is instantly. Can I say that? Yes.
Instantly.
Instantly affected and impacted in Canada, in the United, in, in UK, all around the world. Because with social media nowadays, the trauma never leaves. I've had to stop, and I suggest, and I'm sure Dr. Daniels, if you ask anybody around the table, I had to turn off the TV. No longer open a newspaper. And then our children, shh, are the youth. The youth who witnessed. See, we sheltered or shielded them for years, the reality of injustice and the impact of racism. Cause when we came home, we smiled. Mom and dad, how was your day? Auntie, uncle, how was your day? Just fine. Meanwhile, you just traveled. Through. So now, the blinders are off. Now there's an opportunity, as Brother Tyron, it's so eloquently and consistently shared with us over the past day and a half that we've been together. It's about the love, it's about the hope, it's about taking ownership for our own community. And letting folks know, when we need your help, we will ask you. But until then, please don't impose yourselves on us. Please and thank you. Don't impose yourselves on us, we got this. You created the problem. But we're gonna solve it, thank you very much. Because all you know how to do is to create the problem. We are going to actually resolve and solve. And in order for us to do that, we need our space, thank you very much. Cause black folks, we're very polite folks. We've been raised to be polite. So please and thank you, just let us be, because the solution, we've always had it. We've just never been able to apply it. So I thank you for the opportunity, and like my sister from the UK, the Association of Black Law Enforcers in Canada.
Hold on a minute.
Oh.
I gotta go to our sister for.
Yes, I was just gonna say that we thank you as the IVW for all the work that you're doing.
Absolutely.
So now, we want to. My sister Shimon, all the way from Trinidad. I come and give you some nice roti down there. Jamaica with the jerk chicken, but Trinidad with the roti. So talk to us from your perspective about, not so much policing, cause that's not the area you worked in, but to give us examples, number one, of the impact, cause you, you shared with us some of the issues that are being, and then how there's efforts to try to address them in much more, dare I say, humane ways, um, given the efforts of people like yourself, your experiences to try and make a difference.
Thank you. Well, actually, before I go there, I was gonna, um, speak to what, um, Miss Sister Jackie was saying when she spoke to colonialism, because that, that's what we live, classism. Racism is, is a recent thing for us, um, you know, the, the Indo, um, African and the East Indians, that's new to us. We've always had class, class has always been, it's always been classism. So when I hear you speak of it, it's like, okay, well, yeah, that's what we're used to. But now, we've now added, because of the, you know, opening of the world with social media, all of a sudden now, we have a race issue. I mean, we're all brown, we're all black, but now it's the East Indian and the, in, um, African that we're fighting with. Um, as far as the initiatives that have been taken, there's the, um, are you referring to like the bail boys? Okay, so there's the bail boys, which is an initiative that was brought by one of our former presidents, um, when he was a mad, when he was a judge, Kamona, where instead of an alternative to being incarcerated, um, the offenders offered the opportunity to choose to either be educated or employed, um, enrolled in a program called Bail Boys, and they have certain initiatives that they have to do, certain programs they have to be involved in. Um, it also includes them reporting to the police station on a daily basis in order to maintain their freedom. Um, and should they remain clean and clear, then their record is, you know, is, is untouched. But if they do breach anything, then they're back to the courts and, and they serve that. And that has seemed to have worked with the non-violent crimes. To assist with the war on drugs as you're fighting with. We have recently decriminalized marijuana in Trinidad and Tobago. And, um, that has also reduced a lot of the smaller offenses that persons that were going in unnecessarily, spending years, because as I was saying before, over seventy percent of our prisons are filled with persons who are waiting to be tried, you know, they're on remand. And a lot of them were persons with possession, small amounts and stuff, cause it was an, an un-bailable offense. So now, with the permission and the decriminalization of marijuana, it has reduced those numbers significantly. They also have, um, drug courts, um, that helps to reduce or persons who have substance abuse problems from being placed in unnecessarily in, in prison. It's more than just a treatment because they assist with jobs, again, education, along with receiving the necessary treatments. And then we have the juvenile court, um, where the young people are allowed to be tried by their peers when they have non-violent crimes, and to receive community service or different things based on the guidelines of their peers. So those things have assisted, those initiatives have assisted in keeping some of the unnecessary persons from being criminalized. Thank you.
Well, wait, no, no, we have to talk more.
Yes, sir.
We appreciate that. But you, because see, the reason why these forums are so incredibly important, because very often, we are so busy doing the work, we don't talk to each other, we don't share information. Talk to us about the danger that corrections officers face, the threats that you live under and those who are in the system live under. Cause I don't think many people have heard about those kinds of dangers. And, and we've talked about them in other places too, the degree in which now there are ways in which people in the system are start, starting to, it's, it's this, 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 this very complex dynamic of people working to change the system and correct the system, and not, but also being in danger of being consumed by some of the aberrations that have been created by it. So I wish you would just share just some of the dangers that corrections officers, if I'm using the right term enough.
Prison officers, we're not yet.
Yeah, I mean, correct me and give me the right terminology.
Prison officers. Um, well, well, you know, just as you said, now, um, I am not sure what initiated it, whether, you know, I don't even know. I think trafficking is something that has always been a part of the whole criminal justice system. But the rise in trafficking has given the inmates that power where if an officer wrongs them by doing their job, you know, they can now call on the outside and put a hit on their lives. And because of how small Trinidad and Tobago is, you know, you, the, plus, the offender is your neighbor, is, they went to school together, is somebody that know your family member. And as Miss, as Sister Edwards was saying earlier, sometimes, you know, they, they threaten the officers by letting them know, you know, I know your child's name, I know, I know what school your child goes to, I know what time your child is picked up from school. Um, so sometimes, and not saying it's okay, not giving an excuse for trafficking, but sometimes officers are fearful and feel the need to protect their family members, and, and they get themselves involved in, you know, this trafficking situation, to the point where we are losing officers annually. Um, last year, we lost two within a week, a week, um, because of doing their job again. The particular offenders involved gave an ultimatum to the administration. They wanted certain demands met, and because the administration did not back down, did not meet the demands, they took out two officers within a week of each other. Um, so it, it, it has become to the point where some persons feel, hey, I need my life, I need my family safe, so trafficking is all there is.
I just wanted you to share that, cause that is a very, very strong proposition. Now, what we have here are people who are socially conscious, who have decided, unlike some, who have become careerists and they're in the system and they've been systematized and they're, as Sister Jackie talked about it, they've contributed to the harm. There are others who fight courageously and, and, and we want to identify them. And, uh, Sister Jackie also said that people come home and they don't necessarily share with their families what they're going through, cause they don't want their families to experience it as well. One of the things that we're interested in doing is trying to find more people who will come to the table. And Brother Dr. Terry Watson has been dealing with this issue of trying to identify folk who can join the movement. But he does it in a way that recognizes that joining this movement can be harmful. And so, wish you would just share your approach and let people know what you're doing to try to create more socially conscious folk and to give them ways in which they can be protected and shielded within the village.
Yeah, so, first of all, I pride for me being here, of course, in fact, like, um, as Dr. was saying, you know, um, and I'm taking down notes as well. You know, one thing that I wanna comment on though too is, when we're doing this work, sometime we don't take the time to realize the impact it's having on ourselves. Do you remember the song by C D Warner, Love Is Need of Love today? So I just wrote that up, gee, and I, and, and this comes from the brother that, that was talking today about justice. And he said, justice, what, what'd he say? I wrote it down too, I wrote everything down. Justice means to be made whole. So I have this thought about justice, the meaning of justice today. Because some of us who've been doing this work don't recognize that in a world of trying to seek justice ourselves, we don't take the time to make ourselves whole. And so, what I, the approach that we're taking is, you know, we are encouraging black, I was, we want black law enforcement, and I say this, black conscious law enforcement, who's in the role and is doing the job. And we wanna make sure that they have a space that they can come to, to one, talk amongst one another, right? Share their stories, you know, cause what's going on in Chicago will be going on in, in, in Houston, which will be going on in New York. And we also wanna make sure that they have the right, uh, 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 guidance along the way. But in addition to that, we also know that when you cross that thin blue line, there could be consequences. And so, we wanna make sure that, when we are encouraging officers to do that, that when they come across the legal ramifications, that there's a pathway to have some legal representation. So, our, you know, the national strategies for blacks in policing, we have those two main goals. One is to help them to develop and sustain their black consciousness. And when they do that at the job, make sure they have some legal representation. Right? Because you can't have one without the other. Um, one of the things that I, I love doing, and I, I was just thinking of playing my brain off of talking, you know, I, I do a show called Moses People's Speech, and I was talking about that earlier today.
What's the show called?
Moses People's Speech. And I named it after my great-grandfather, Moses BeCom, I'm not that creative. You know, but again, him being the first black police officer that had that career in New York, and all the officers that came asking him, man, he was. And all the officers that came asking him, man, he was he was appointed at eighteen ninety-two, right? All the officers that came asking him, right, and all the stories that, the stories that he told. And the stories that Samuel J. Battle told, officers are telling today. Right, there's a, there was a, there's a, I did an interview with uh again Abraham Bowden, right, the guy that was this pardon by Biden. And in his book, which I'm still getting through, he talked about the day he got to work, you know, he made a phone call, he looked up and he saw a loose hanger from the city. And his superior told him, you being too thin-skinned. He was joking around. Last year in Ohio, the same thing happened, so the chief left the P K K on the brother's desk. Said you being too, you being too thin-skinned, he was joking around. These stories are told over and over and over again. And again, I I I think the fact that when you are realizing that you are trying to be, have a black consciousness. I I would, I did, I talk about this in my book, I said, what what good is a black body rather than a black mind? Right, and when you think about that, you 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 realize you, you know, we get often, we get uh leadership say all the time, we wanna. We wanna bring in more black officers, now again, I say why? Why? Because if you bring in someone with the the hue of a of the skin, but they don't have the conscious of mind. You're gonna do more harm to the community that you bring them into, because one, you think you're doing the right thing by bringing in diversity. You checking off that list, and at the same time, that brother, that sister will be doing harm for that community. So if it really a double S or that doesn't do good for anyone. So I think when we, when the the whole purpose is that we want other officers to hear other officers, how they deal. With the the grief, the stress, um the physiological piece to that, right, because. The stress, you know, the stress that, you know, so many officers that come forward, not only talk about the mental health impacts, but how that turns into a physical thing. Right, you know, we, you know, the 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 sisters, sisters out of out of the city. The the Baltimore Four, right, they told their story, I I interviewed on my show. And one of the sergeants mentioned, she was like, the stress was so much for her, that her kids had to recognize it. Right, I yeah, I talked, you know, again, I do a lot of interviews, oh no, in public, but I did some behind the scenes too. And one of these folks I interviewed, I remember she was the daughter of two detectives. And she said her parents tried to hide it from her, but even as a young kid, she knew the stress. And one of the questions I asked her, when I asked every officer that I interviewed. I said, and this is a, I'm giving a reminder. We go, we go, we go to shit anyway, right? One of the questions I asked, I say, when you hear the phrase black lives matter, the first thing that comes to mind is, and I leave that wide open. And she said, well, she said, she was like, well, they're they're trying to be, you know, uh you know, fight for justice, yada yada yada. I follow it up, when you hear the phrase blue lives matter, what's the first thing that comes to mind? She looked me in my eyes, she said, no. I says, elaborate, she says, because it didn't matter for my mother and my father. She said, I see them, that they both retired, but she said, I see the stress that they had to go through and their lives didn't matter. So when you try to hide from kids, kids melt. They see, you know, kids are, I'll tell you what, we gotta give them credit, they see. But I think the most important, to wrap it up, the most important part to this is that when we are trying to get. Trying to make any change from the institution inside of law enforcement, you gotta make sure we get a support from brothers and sisters, doing the right thing.
Yeah, but you can't stop there, because you had a concrete example of someone who suffered greatly. Because they had the audacity to see something and say something, which is what we want our conscious police officers to do. And you led us through it, the resulted in legislation, so would you just?
So my sister, I wish, I wish she was here today, because she she would love this, oh my gosh, she would love this. Her, she has a, I don't know, a posse too that that follows her around, so. So Cario Horn, the sister out of Buffalo, New York. Right, you know, and 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 she was, she did a video of her just crying after George Floyd, and I got, I got a bit more thing. I still haven't seen the George Floyd video, I refuse to watch it. And when people kept asking me why, I said, because I know how it ends. And there will be another one, right? So I refuse to watch that one, I I talked about that trauma, that 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 period of time, the Mark Ibury, the Breonna Taylor. That that was just too much trauma at one time, I still haven't watched it to today. But so she's, so George Floyd happened and 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 my dear sister Cario, she was crying, alive, she was like, this should not happen. If they had a duty to intervene, like almost every police policy in every other country. And again, people also buy they need more policing training and be more, they don't, you need to follow the training that they currently have. And enforce the ones on the books. Same thing with the policy, same thing with the behavior, so she had the audacity, like you said, she's not, she didn't speak out, she intervened, that's a big difference. Right, but still, people speak out, I respect that too, those who whistle blow, I respect that too. But she saw harm being happening at that moment, and she said, no, not in front of me. And she went, 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 uh Officer Greg Karikowski was choking, and the brother there was Neil Mack. Was choking Neil Mack, who was feeling tough, she went to go grab his arm and say, you hurting him. Take your, your heels are off of his throat. And when she did that, he turned around and punched her in her face. And when she had her repercussions, besides being fired and losing her, she was, she was a, the break, I mean, she was a single parent. Right, she had five children, she had five kids. And so when she, when they, when they find her and she lost her pension, that put her in a spot where she should not have been in. At the same time, the 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 officer that was choking. Uh he, later on, he got arrested in the federal prison for the same thing that she said that he did, but wasn't a difference. And he's still to the day get his pension. And she's still, even though the judge says what he says, she's still, there was an article that just came out just now, it was on social media. It said, where's Cario's pension, even though she got the judgment, still today she hasn't seen that pension. And so we can't stop, again, we can't stop that fight, and I I know, when we're done tonight, I'm gonna give her a court, cause I saw the article, I'm gonna say, hey, what's going on? We were talking about pension this, about about two weeks ago. And so the the one thing I wanna say is that when we did the legislation, Cario's law, the Cario's law that was ready had six sections. And it really is about the duty to intervene, is what happens when you don't intervene, what happens when the department covers up. What happens uh if 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 uh if they falsify records? And then, and then there's five and six, we talk about restored justice, what happened when you retaliate against a certain disease, right? And then we have a little retroactive, uh uh what we call the retroactive uh restored justice piece. And so when she, when Cario, when she went to the, her her case was done, she was going to her court case, they use a law that she wrote. To give her her freedom, so she says, she says, I wrote my own freedom papers, I said, she puts it. And so, you know, I I I think, and again, that law is still, is state, is sitting on the New York State Center as we speak. And is readily replicable across any other state, you can take that law and put on any city for it now, it's it's there. And and I didn't mention this piece, because we did it so well, we have a corporate blueprint, right? And this, and you email, you say, hey, I need a blueprint, we tell you how to get, how to, how to get the community involved first, to your politicians. And then what to do after, so, uh, yes.
No, no, go ahead, finish.
So I was, I was gonna say, that's my conclusion right there, yeah, yeah.
I I I just think we have an obligation to write a letter to the the city of Buffalo. Signed by all of us, individuals and organizations, calling for the city of Buffalo to pay this sister. Without doing that. Cause like, yeah, but like some people, I always thought that she would have gotten her money by now, without knowing these white folk.
Well, that's that's the thing about it, see, so so, you know, and 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 so Strategies for Justice is a speaking and training bureau, right? So we get speakers, God pay the speakers, if they go out and speak, we pay them, right? Cause we, I like to reimburse their time and their energy. So people contact S F T A, okay, we get Cario to speak, because they think she's got the whole pot of money. And I'm like, no, she needs money, she is, she's currently broke, right, you know? And and I, and I think, when I talk about offices, right, talk about young officers, this is all same. When you find an officer that's willing to do the right thing, we gotta support them.
Let's actually, let's do that, and and that, because I I I got it, but what we wanna do is. Draft something for us, so we can begin to do that, and we'll even, we'll even try to get to talk about starting a campaign off that. Again, that's why communication is important, cause they need to hear the uproar and the uh of of us all across the country. So we will do that. Gotta move on in the interest of 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 our audiences listening in and and and. You are actually, you know, listening audience, we're to, you you are participating, you're joining in and actually seeing. Live some of the brightest and best minds from not only the United States, from from the Caribbean, Canada, United Kingdom. A grapple with some of the most difficult and challenging issues of our time, but also the the hope. The aspirations, the possibilities when people come together to address these issues. Now, the next thing I wanna do, before we open it up for a few comments from uh anyone along the table. Is to deal with the issue of messaging. Um this issue of abolishing the police, defunding the police, all of these kinds of concerns and issues that are out there. But also the question of language, uh David Hess was not able to uh to stay with us today, but he. Was challenging us to begin to look at things differently, to talk about the question of not. To take the word criminal injustice out of our, the same. Same black, we just can't say that, it's not a criminal justice system, it's just a slacker, what they call a Oxy Dioran, whatever that thing is. And we, we shouldn't be doing that, he talks about community justice. He talks of us, he talks to us about the whole question of of the question of healing and wholeness. To get us a sense of what does justice really look like. And so a part of our challenge is to translate. Lots of concepts to the community in an atmosphere where certain phrases have become toxic and difficult and whatever, is uptick in. It appears in crime, it certainly has been covered more. And and sometimes we, as progressives and activists, we just keep plunging ahead. And sometimes we don't listen to some of the people on the corner. So our sister Akichi Taifa has a way of making it plain or trying to get us to understand what the challenges are. So Sister Akichi, uh sort of, tell us who we need to listen to or who we have to. Sort of convert or 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 message to in terms of uh the kind of way that you talk about it in terms of somebody on the corner. Tell us the story.
Yeah, well, you know, we really need to listen to all members of our community, I mean. There's Miss Pearl on the corner, who sees everything and knows everything and all that, but she's scared to get off of her porch. Because of, you know, what's out there, and sometimes she calls the police. Because that's what she's been trained to do, because she sees the media and the media says that is what is to be done. But she doesn't know about the unintended consequences of what happens sometimes when you call the police, or sometimes when you call the wrong police. Okay, and that she doesn't know about a lot of the positive things that. People have been working on, because it's not really shown out there in the uh media, she doesn't know about the. Uh all the things that all the great people around this woman are doing, most of them are in law enforcement. She doesn't know about those um uh uh things, all that she knows is that. She gotta get Young Tavon off the corner. I mean, you know, because the media said that he's a super predator. Okay, and we all know that that's not right and that's not true, but we need to get our stories to the Miss Pearls of our communities. Okay, so that. Their first instance isn't to call the police, but for the autistic son out there to call the mental health provider. And that there's a mechanism out there that she knows about, that she can dial as opposed to nine one one. Cause we know how oftentimes if the wrong people respond, how that ends up. We've seen too many instances of that, so we need to reach the Miss Pearls of our community, or the. Forgot who was telling about, the Miss Dawson's of our communities, we need to reach them and. We as a community need to protect them and protect their families and protect their youth. So I just wanted to, you know, just kinda uh relay that, because Miss Pearl is all of us. They're ourselves, they're our aunties, they're our mamas, they're our grandmas, you know what I'm saying, peering out those Venetian blinds, okay? Yeah, but you know, we need a new paradigm. And a new paradigm of justice, not a new paradigm of just us, which is what it's been, okay? And we all need to be a part of making it happen, and this year was happening right here, right now, this is step one of that process.
All right, all right, so now, what I wanna do to to sort of close. Before we open up for maybe half time for a few more comments, we're, we're really honored and delighted. That the honorable Sharon Patterson Howard. Mayor of the great city of Mount Vernon, New York. Took time out of her busy schedule to come hang out with us and sit with us. To give her reflections and to share her experiences, because she is an elected official. And she has to hear the defund the police, get rid of, and how to deal with, and all of those kind of issues she has to deal with. She's also strategically situated, because she is the chair of the Public Safety Committee for the Association of African American Mayors. And they need to be hearing these conversations, so we're looking at some layers on capacity here. In order for us to have access and to share information and so forth, cause they're grappling with these issues as well, because there is this rumbeat. About more police, more police, more police to places, lock them up more, return to this, that and the other. So I wanna give her the last words, just in terms of how she's approaching it, what she's doing in her city, and what she sees. In terms of the climate we're working on, so we just wanna uh uh yield to you, uh our beloved sister, and thank you so much for being here with us today.
Thank you so much, so um, you know, yes, we we've heard the different language, defund the police. Uh reform the police, uh and and I agree with you, it has to be more than reform, cause reform just feels like a tweaking. Of a system that has not worked for a long time, and it has to be much more around transformation. Uh it it has to be a transformative experience from the bottom up and from the top down, it can't just be community policing. Um it 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 has to be a change in culture, and so, you know, some of the things that we have done in our community. Like you said, it it really is about the community piece, so we we implemented a project called COURSE. Which is community, organizations, resources and environmental strategies. And and so that's really having community come in. And Brother Tyrone, I appreciate you, because you represent community, not just the larger community. But those who have come home, those who have served time, those who have been in the past a part of the challenge and. Who are now bringing their credentials, their lived experience to the table. To transform the community, and so, you know, I've had the pleasure of leading. In different communities, it's called different things, but it's the violence interrupters, the credible messengers. And in my prior role before coming mayor, for ten years, I was able to lead a team of formerly incarcerated individuals. Um who really helped to transform community safety in in a community. And it was not working with the police, but in a way in conjunction with. There there was a respect, when when the police, when they first came in the community, the police didn't want him there. You know, I arrested him, I know who he is, you know, what is he doing? But when we saw a decrease in the gun violence, when they they started saying, oh, can your snug team? Come and be a midnight basketball, because the presence of policing sometimes and overpolicing. Causes people to act out, I I mean, look, I'm I'm fifty-four and I have degrees and advanced degrees. But if I pull up somewhere and I see a whole bunch of police, I'm like, I want you to run. While you're here, you want me to act, you know, maybe I'll perform for you, and so if if we feel that sometime as adults. Imagine how our young people feel, and so you're here, so we're gonna give you an audience, we're we're gonna perform for you. And so really being able to have our snug teams, our violence interrupters, our credible messengers. In places where we forfeit, see, we forfeited our responsibility as community. A a lot of things that we call the police for, like you said, are things that the neighborhood. Used to regulate, very intentionally, cause we regulate, there were things that we didn't accept.
That's right.
Um but because, you know, of increasing violence. Um, but because, you know, of increasing violence, or mind your business, don't talk to my child, not my child syndrome. Which, which, a lot of that came because the elders or, you know, like we talked about crack being in the community. Crack devastated every urban community a- across the country. And we still have not recovered from it. And we think some urban communities are recovering from it, but we're not. We're not recovering from it because we are healing from that because of gentrification. It just means the neighbors, the neighborhood is pretty. But the neighborhood has been transformed in exclusion of us, right? So, so we don't need gentrification, we need revitalization. We need reinvestment in jobs, in education, in housing, in programming, and in resources. So those are the things that, that we need in the urban communities. And so I absolutely believe that policing is a necessary function. But oftentimes we use it improperly and for the wrong things. As we said, we don't need it for the mental health calls, the noise calls. Because that's what people call the police for oftentimes in many communities more than they. They're playing loud music, the people outside loud, they're loitering, they're congregating in the neighborhood, move them, move them off my block, move them off my corner. And these are things that the community addressed before. And so there is a community responsibility to come back, come back again and start to regulate and deal with our own neighborhoods. We, we've talked about George Floyd, and as I said, policing across the country, there are shortages in, in every policing department, in every major urban area. And the summer of George Floyd was also the summer of COVID. A lot was going on. We, we as governments were expected to be public health officials. You had to deal with non-essential stores, shut them down, parties, shut them down. All of the firecrackers that came across the whole country, you know, because there were no fireworks, shut, things, shut them down. And so we substituted, our police were worn out. They, they were overwhelmed with social justice, COVID and everything else. We engaged our fire department to kind of deal with some of the loitering, the noise complaints, the firecrackers, the parties in the backyard. You know, all of, because the clubs were shut down, so people were having parties in their houses, in their basements. It became a public health issue. And the fire department goes on those EMS calls, right? And so we brought them in. And, and like, you don't have beef with fire. Like who really dislikes the fire department? I mean, they, the community doesn't, but they engaged them in a different way, which gave some time and some ease of pressure to our police department. A, so that they could recatch, you know, they could catch their breath, they could exhale, and that they could really focus on the things that policing was really required for, the violent incidents, not, not just the mental health calls, not the noise calls. Uh, and then also really, really engage those, those social workers, those not-for-profits. And I ask you, let's stop calling them not-for-profits. Everywhere in the world, they call them NGO. Non-governmental organizations. They are tax exempt because they do the work of governments, right? But they do the work of government in a much more efficient way because they don't have the same bureaucratic requirements. And so we have to find a way to work with our NGOs to meet the goals of government and community. And it has to be done in a way that is very strategic and very intentional. We have to define for them what we need from them and then give them place, space, partnership, and funding to do it. Because they can pivot and turn in ways that we can't always do it. And so, you know, the cold response, the mental health response, if you really dig into your call volume of your police department, ninety percent of your calls are not for violent crimes. They're really not. And so if the police can focus on the investigations, solving unsolved murders, cold cases, you know, if, if we're not having them go to a noise complaint or to a mental health call, they have much more time and ability to focus on cold cases and solving real homicides, drug investigations, do those precision policing that might be required as opposed to gentle things. Another thing that we did and, and we're looking to do in Mount Vernon, we use some of our ARPA money, our, our American Rescue Plan money. Um, and we're purchasing the mobile command stations, the ones that used to sit and put the big eye in the sky and look and please. And, and kind of be an occupation, but it's no longer an occupation. It's really about community policing. And they should be bringing out food. They, they should be going and sitting in the neighborhood and posting up so they can talk to Miss Pearl. There needs to be more park walk and talk, right? Park walk and talk. So they're getting to know the neighbors so that that community policing becomes very, very real. And, and, you know, that's, that's critical. And so we just have to find, you know, creative ways during COVID, um, what we understood is, is we saw that the fault lines that existed already were much deeper than we could have ever imagined. We knew how deep they are. They got to see. They got to see the disparities in health, in education, in jobs. They got a cold, we got a flu, we got pneumonia. People became infected, but we died in our communities to cover. And so how do we sit there and really use that? This is the first time probably in several generations that federally, on a state level, on a local level, that we're really talking about disparities and inequity in this way. And so we're using crime statistics to look at where we need to do precision policing. But are we using those crime, same crime statistics and comparing them with the health of that community? The educational outcomes of that community, the employment rates or the unemployment rates of those communities? And if we are, then if we are putting so much of our police resources sometimes into overpolicing, can we use that same energy to put educational and health and job training and development programs into those same neighborhoods that we're targeting for policing? And, and so those are just some of the ways that, I, I know they're doing this in Kansas, in Kansas City. They're doing it in St. Louis. I, I spoke with Mayor Turner, um, because he's the president of Alma, and he, well, the past, immediate past president. And he, they have a campaign called One Houston, uh, and, and they're doing it there. They're doing it in Montgomery and, and Savannah. And so I think there's definitely an opportunity for a lot of synergy between the African American mayors to come and have a conversation. Newark, Atlanta, the, the mayors are thinking in this way. They're thinking in this way in a way that they've never thought before. And, you know, of course, you're gonna always have the challenge of the PBA. You know, when you're talking about, not constables, but we call them auxiliary police, right? So auxiliary police, how are we engaging some people to be auxiliary police? How are we engaging in helping to fund and expand violence interruption programs? This is not in opposition to the police. It's als, it's an option.
Would you talk about your wellness department?
So, um, we have in the Mount Vernon Police Department, we just kicked off about two, three weeks ago, um, publicly because we did a drive run for about a month, a, a wellness division. Just like you have the patrol division, you have the detective division, you have the support services division, we have a wellness division. And the wellness division is both internal and external. It has a bifurcated focus. It's internal to really initiate twenty-first century policing within the police department. That's the officer wellness that you're talking about. That's the officer wellness. Um, because mentally, emotionally, and spiritually sick and exhausted people can't help to heal a broken and, and hurting community. We can't deal with their trauma until we're dealing with our trauma internally. And so, you know, providing those resources, and sometimes people come forward and say they need them. Sometimes it's in the midst of a disciplinary, you know, they're saying, this is what we need to do. Um, and then externally, we have opened a separate and distinct precinct. Uh, we know who our high flyers are. We engage them all the time. Uh, and so now partnering with our NGOs, our mental health, our substance abuse, our peer counselors and substance abuse, our, our violence interrupters, um, our organizations that work with our unsheltered and unhoused neighbors, um, those who are coming back into the community from incarceration or group home are young people because there's such a rising number of young people who have nowhere to live. They've left their parents' homes, or they're being released from group homes where they don't know where to go. And, and so this wellness division really is working, um, to deal with prevention, intervention, and restorative justice. Because we have to have, as my girlfriend Cheryl says, an air, land, and sea, sea approach. No one's approach is gonna have this one to help. And so we have to deal with the root causes of violence in our community, the root causes of disengagement, and provide some alternatives and partnerships. And so we're excited because we know that those who need help, we, we, we see them and we encounter them, right? We might even arrest them or, or make a different call, but who's doing the follow-up? Where is the coordinated follow-up? And you can't just kick that off to parole or probation or, or a, uh, not-for-profit or an NGO. So really doing that case management along with the police and the NGOs to do the follow-up. They need housing, they need mental health support, they need, um, substance abuse counseling. And so, and, and then even working with our schools, especially our young people who've engaged in violence and are having those level three and level four code of conduct issues, and they've been taken out of school. How are we working with them? How are we making sure that while they're out of school for an, uh, an extended period of time, that they're not losing credits? And then how do we help them reintegrate back into the school system and do those restorative circles? Because when you're reintroducing a young person back into the schools, um, who's had a history, you know, teachers are scared, students are scared, and we have to find a way to help that young person redefine themselves. Because we define them and we don't give them an opportunity to redefine and even make apology to those that they might have hurt. The last thing that I want to do, because I am a social worker also. I think we have to look at treating the vicarious trauma that many of us have as providers, right? Whether you're in law enforcement, social work, community activism, wherever you're working and wherever you're doing that work. And there is this model called the sanctuary model. Andres nationally has it. And how do I know that's so important? Because in working in cure violence, ceasefires, no. It's interesting. Years ago, we'd clutch our pearls if somebody got punched in the face. Not like, oh, they only got punched in the face. You know, and it was like, oh, somebody got stabbed. Was it fatal? No, they got stabbed and like, okay, no problem. Oh, they got stabbed, it was fatal. But they got shot. Where'd they get shot? You know, and, and what's happening? And our tolerance for the level of violence has increased as providers, as pastors, as family members, as parents, because we've had to. Because we're so confronted with it every day, find a way to anesthetize ourselves to the trauma, else you can't breathe. And so so many of us are flying around with these capes trying to be super men and super women. But our super capes are becoming our noose, and it's about to hang us. Because we feel that we have to be everything to everyone, and we're staying on these front lines. And we're not getting the care and the support. So we find ways to pull ourselves back. Um, and when we pull ourselves back and we become numb, then we don't respond with the same level of urgency to things in early stages because we're so used to it being so out of control. And so we have to find a way to continuously heal ourselves as we create policy and programs and work to change environments in our community. Because if not, we'll tolerate more because we're tired and we're overwhelmed and we're suffocating.